Call to order. The city commission meeting for the city of Dickinson, Tuesday, April 21st of 2020. Let the record show that all commissioners are present and practicing social distancing. Mr. Gah, the order of business, are there any changes to the order of business?
Yes, thank you, President Decker. There are a couple of additions and one deletion. Under administration, we'll move the reports down and we'll have a new item C that will be to discuss election sign posting and consideration to remove the advanced time limit, and then that will make reports D. We have one already and we're going to add a second one under special event and summer events, just to have a little discussion on that. Under public works, item number A for the terminal agreement, that is being removed. And then just as a point of order at 5:00, we will have a public hearing and then move right into the public comments and we'll call out this number again, but if any citizens want to call in for the public hearing or comments, that number is 456-7006. And again, we'll announce that as we begin the discussion on a public hearing.
I know there is one individual that'll be calling in. They informed me so, and that's not due to the fire code, it's just for public comments, so.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gah on the amended order of business? Not a here motion on the amended order of business?
Move to approve, Mr. President.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions? All in favor of the amended order of business state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. On the consent agenda, are there any items that commissioners that you wish to discuss? Hearing no questions or comments on the consent agenda, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve the consent agenda by Commissioner Trustum.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We'll move right into our administration and finance agenda items and the first item up is a COVID response update and that'll be presented by City Administrator Gah.
Yes, thank you, President Decker and commissioners. In front of you from this, you'll see two resolutions. They both involve temporary employment policies as a result of the COVID response. The first one is really the emergency paid leave for COVID that we've been developing and usually using throughout the process and been evolving, and so that is the first resolution. The second one that kind of builds upon that is the one relating to the FF-CRA regulations, which is the Family First Corona Response Act, which is federal legislation. So we're just asking for commission approval on these to be able to make sure we're in compliance throughout this in regards to temporary employment leave.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Gah on the first resolution, which will be 20-2020, and that is the COVID temporary employment policy? Any questions for Mr. Gah?
I don't have a question, but just a comment, I think, you know, between administration and our executive team, I think you guys have done an outstanding job. I know I get to witness that on a daily basis now and I think you're doing a really great job trying to corral this.
Thank you.
Moving target.
One thing maybe to update the commission and the public as well, the exec team started when this happened. We just made daily morning meetings and we call in every morning and discuss all of the press conferences, all of the media, any of the employee needs, and so we've, really has been a team effort and it has kept us on our toes, besides our day jobs.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Gah? Now I look for a motion on 20-2020.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Steiner.
Second.
A second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. On the next resolution, which is the FF-CRA temporary employment policy, that is Resolution 21-2020, any questions or comments for Mr. Gah or staff? Hearing no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Steiner.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Gah, you have another resolution, this is a recycling fee waiver.
Yes, and this will become 22-2020. Once the handling and transporting of materials in the recycling became a bit of an obstacle, we sustained that, suspended that program rather, and decided that it would be appropriate that while we do that, not knowing how long that will be, that we provide a refund or provide a waive the fee. So you'll see a garbage fee, but it'll be $4.25 less in this next bill based on this, which is the recycling fee. So it's just a very simple way to say we know you're not recycling at this time and that's 100% of the recycling fee, which quite frankly is very inexpensive for what you get. So we provide a very good service, people are missing it, we're hearing a lot about it, and we'll get that back up as quick as possible, but staff recommends approval of that resolution.
And just for the general public, this is indefinite until we go back to standard operations. So any questions, comments for Mr. Gah or staff? Hearing none, I look for a motion.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Trustum.
Second.
With a second from Commissioner Walla. Any further comments, questions for Mr. Gah or staff? This is Resolution 22-2020. Hearing no comments or questions, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. And we will move into reports, or I guess we're gonna...
Election signs.
Yep, the election, yes.
There's a section in our code, 39.10, that has a subsection related to what they call temporary civic signs. So in advance of an election, if somebody wants to put one in your yard or in your property, there's some regulations there, and they cannot be in city right of ways or any public right of ways, but the city code states that they can be posted no earlier than 30 days in advance of an election or seven days after. That used to be fairly consistent with some state of North Dakota regulations, which have now been removed. There's no limitations on signs as far as the state, so a few of the home rural cities still have these and this is one of them. So the traditional election day is June 9th, so 30 days would be May 9th. Now, if we think about, that's a rather dated protocol, there's a lot more early voting done now, and here we are in a pandemic where we're going to encourage people to do more advanced voting. I think those, the cards from the state are coming out to make sure that they've got people registered correctly and you can request that and then they'll send it back to you. Those will be out from the state, you're actually be able to vote by May 1st. So we've had a couple of questions from candidates about, you know, can they get the signs out earlier, because if we're asking people, if you think about it, just like we did the census, we were hitting it early to encourage people. So maybe that encouragement of seeing that sign a little bit earlier than the 9th, so your staff would recommend just removing that, not enforcing that for this election only, the June election only, and let people get their signs out. We're almost to that point where they'll be getting their ballots anyway.
Any questions for Mr. Gah? I know this is going to be a very unusual year.
Mr. President, I just have a question for Ms. Winko. Ms. Winko, since this decision directly affects me personally, would it be better for me to abstain if I'm not comfortable?
I would recommend that would be in the best course of business.
And I was going to ask the exact same question, so I will pass this to the Vice President, Mr. Frederick, to garner a motion and I will also abstain, so. And we still have enough commissioners with two of us abstaining for a forum. With that, is there any questions for Mr. Gah we'd like to bring up regarding waiving that requirement?
Move to approve.
For motion, we've got a motion from Mr. Steiner.
Second.
Second from Ms. Walla. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the vote. Ms. Walla, or Mr. Steiner, excuse me.
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
And Vice President votes aye. Motion carries. All right.
Mr. President?
Mrs. Trustum?
Just for clarification, because this wasn't on the agenda, this allows candidates to start putting up signage now?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
And we will notify the city candidates and we'll notify the county so they could let their county candidates do. We will provide, so everybody gets that fair opportunity.
And I would say even on the state level, you might want to contact Governor Burgum's office and his Democrat challenger, Shelley Lenz, so that they also know, because I'm sure Dr. Lenz is adhering to our local policy and not putting anything up at this time, so.
Agreed. Okay, now we'll move into reports.
The first one, the commission had requested a special meeting be set up to meet with the DDA about some of their financial concerns for 2020 and to start discussing 2021. I had a good discussion with their executive director and their new president last week. They are actually meeting, right now, their meeting started at 10, or excuse me, at 4, to start discussing what their needs are and planning kind of to bring you some information to update you on their situation and their plans and really some of the things they've been doing. Next Monday or Tuesday, either of those, if we started in the 4 or 4:30 time period, we could ask the commission if they have any schedule conflicts or if either of those would work and then we'll set that up.
Tuesday would work better for me.
Okay.
I'm fine. I'm basically sitting on a computer or at a meeting with somebody for the last month and a half, so I'm in town, so Tuesday, whatever. Tuesday works for me.
All right, seeing guesses and head nods, so Tuesday, the 28th, we'll let them know and we'll make a notice and...
Are we going to try to set that up virtual or how are we going to?
If we did something similar to this, where we're here and they're there, and their president and executive director could be here too to do the presentation, would that work? Do you like that idea? And if some of you wanted to call in on this system, you could do that too.
I think I'd have them here, split them up out there.
I think if the ones, some of them will call in, I think it will work better. If anybody's here, it would be their executive team, which is about the executive boards that are officers, so four or so of them.
How many members are on that?
Is it nine? I think it's nine, 10. It's a pretty good sized group, so. But yeah, I agree, I still haven't given up on the hope of having real personal meetings. It's nice to have them in the room, but...
Maybe we should have about four of them in and let the other five call in if they want to.
Yeah, that's kind of what I was thinking.
Figure something out, you know.
And scheduling might inhibit, you know, might inhibit some of that too, but we're evolving, you know, each meeting we have's a little bit different, a little more efficient, and we're learning from it, so.
We are, getting a little better every day, so.
Then you had a second.
The second one is, you know, everybody wants to return to normal, all of us are excited about things, but I was contacted by First on First the other day about whether or not they should start to plan for the summer. You know, the answer is, we think you should plan for the summer, but when does the summer really start? That's going to be a little bit different. Then the mayor was contacted by Rough Rider Days. We have some special event permits that were approved earlier before all of this, so we might want to reconsider if we're going to allow that or not. So the discussion in our group this morning was, you know, maybe we shouldn't do any large scale events before the end of June, maybe, and so we just wanted to bring that to you and see how you feel about that and then we will talk to those groups. Maybe Rough Rider Days kicks off the summer, usually there's a couple of First on First before that, but that would give us some parameters in looking at our event requests of whether or not we should be planning on them or not.
And part of the discussion also was this morning of having Chief Dossinger and the Rough Rider Commission look at maybe altering the route a little bit with the parade if they do, we do allow a parade, and that's why I wanted to bring that here for us to discuss. I was laying in bed last night thinking about this a lot, I'm like, okay, how can you social distance at our parade, which is the most popular thing? Well, one other thing that just packs everybody together is the throwing of the candy and items from the parade floats. And I think that if we allow, even if we allow the parade, we have to say, no, there is nothing being thrown from floats this year, because all we, all it would take is one person who's infected throwing candy out and spreading that all the way through. I mean, I'm fine with a long parade, extending the route out so we can, people can social distance themselves. We're getting into July, we'll try to be a little bit normal, but I don't think you allow any candidates walking up and down the street, shaking hands, you don't allow anything being thrown from the floats. I mean, people can still participate. I guess if reunions want to have their reunions and take that chance, that's on them. I don't foresee a whole lot of people traveling from out of state, you know, I think people are still going to be cautious, even once the state's open, people are going to be cautious. But I think we can give them some recommendations so that they can move forward, because they're in that planning phase too, much like First on First. First on First is, I think the first couple of First on First in June were all local acts anyway, so those are easy to tell them, okay, no, we're not going to hold First on First. What their concern is, when they get into July, they're having national acts come in, and they need to know if we're going to allow it and they can book them now or, you know, verify that they're still on the docket. When it comes to items for the Rough Rider Commission, they have to make the decision themselves, like the demolition derby, that's a Stark County issue, that's out at the fairgrounds. They're going to have to make the call, the county's going to have to make the call on that one. That's out of our jurisdiction. The concert, that's out at the fairground. Again, they're going to have to make the call, but we can make the call on a lot of the, like the beer garden permits, if, you know, because those are hard, those are hard to police, I'll just put it that way. Like if you say, okay, you can have a beer garden, but you can only have 50 people, well, those 50 people are still going to be on top of each other in a beer garden, even if it's a large area, so.
I don't know, my opinion is, is we go business as usual and if the state has restrictions at that time, then we follow the state.
I would echo that. I think they're working on a phased plan and we work off that and at the end of the day, people want their liberty back and think if we're getting recommendations that it's safer to hold, you know, Phase 3, it says with limited physical distancing protocols. So I think if we follow the guidelines that are handed down from the federal and state level, I think, I think the Rough Rider Commission is going to need to make those calls and our permits could be based on what phase we're in on a state level.
Yeah, I'm just, if we're, if we're in Phase 3 and the recommendation from the state is this, I mean, are we going to be more restrictive?
Well, I don't think, I don't think we are more restrictive, even by giving them a recommendation of not throwing stuff from a parade, that's just being proactive.
Yeah, that, I don't have an issue with that, it's just the point of canceling Rough Rider Days or canceling these events.
No.
I don't think we want to take that step, so.
No, I never, I never, that thought never even crossed my mind, that's our biggest event. But what we can do is give them advice and work with them, like when it comes to the parade route, and say, we're going to restructure the parade route, work with our police department, what would be the best, you know, way we can, instead of turning on First and coming back west, maybe you turn on Second and come back west, which puts a greater gap in between everybody that's on Ballard and you're coming down Second.
I think they turn on First because that's, there's no cross past that, there's no street that goes past First, you know, there.
But I mean, again...
You know, you'd have to come around a different block, totally, but I mean, you could.
I think stretching could eliminate buildup, but I don't think, and people have their spots, they're going to go to where they're comfortable, you know, I think we, we have to give that responsibility to that Rough Rider Commission, and if they want to bring this forth and make it work, they need to work with the police department and find ways to safely make, safely accommodate the growing risk.
Again, you know, like I said, the, we're probably going to have them call in just so we can give them some recommendations, and if we're, the recommendations as a commission is, you know, go with what the state says, we can, we can add some parameters to that. I mean...
Yeah.
I don't know.
You know, or we can assist them if they come back and say, okay, we're going to follow the state, but yes, we like your recommendation to change the route, well then we'll offer them the assistance. Anything outside the city, I think that's up to the Rough Rider Commission and the Stark County Fair Board, that's their decision. You know, the most popular thing is demolition derby.
Yeah, you're talking, making the route longer and you're talking, making that recommendation and not, candidates not walking and shaking hands and kissing babies, I don't think that I have any issue with that, I just don't want to stifle the event either.
Well, and like I said, I never once ever thought about telling them, no, we're not going to have it. It's too big of an event for us.
Well, the idea of bringing this here tonight was to get your thoughts, because those special event permits, the beer garden type of stuff, as you would call it, some of the parades, those stuff are done with the exec team, they're not done here at this platform. So we want to know what you're thinking, but then we can work with them and then we could bring back some future reports as well, here's what we're thinking on that, because I, exactly what I said to the First on First coordinator last week was, well, whatever the state regulations are at the time is what we'll be following, but, you know, we're comfortable that some of those won't be there, but who knows how long before we're totally transitioned.
I think the challenge for them is, they have to lock down, like First on First, they have to lock down the acts. That's why they're looking for guidance. Like, I mean, we can wait for the state in two weeks, or we can tell First on First right now, no, you're not going to in June, or, and you can go in July, or we say, yeah, go ahead and book them, but then if the state comes out and says, hey, you're closed, they're going to come back and say, well, you said I could book them and we can have an event.
That's why I don't think we should make that call. I don't think we have to.
Well, we have, we're leaders of this city, we have to take some responsibility.
Well, as businesses, they have to make those decisions too. As many others did during this crisis. That's my thoughts. Nikki, Ms. Walla?
I would agree, because people are going to do what they want to do anyways, and yes, we can decide on the city, but then do we put a specification that, okay, you can go ahead and do that, but if state goes, then we fall back on that, or, you know, there's just so many different things to work out and think through.
Well, I guess we'll get them in on the calls. From what I'm hearing is, we want to adhere to what the state is going to say. I think we can give them some guidance on some things that they can, they can take as recommendations, they don't have to, like changing the parade route and possibly not passing out candy and/or the candidates doing things, but that'll be up to them. But, you know, like I said, I feel that by, you limit some of the interaction while you can still enjoy the parade. I know candy's a big thing for a lot of these kids, but we just don't want one carrier all of a sudden, and then we get a huge spike in second week of July because somebody was passing out candy and they had COVID. So again, it'll just be recommendations, we'll involve them in the calls, and then they can take those recommendations and they can go forward. Like I said, anything that's in the county with the county, the Stark County Fair Board or anything out at their county fairgrounds, that's up to them. They're going to have to make that call. And again, they have a national act coming in for that concert, so they'll have to make the call if they're going to even hold it. Anything else, Mr. Gah?
Nope, that covers it, thank you.
All right. Okay, our one issue on public safety is at 5:00, so we'll go into the first issue in engineering. Mr. Kubis?
Thank you, President Decker, Mr. Gishman, it's good to see you all virtually, really.
Good to see you too.
So the first item we have is the transfer of a bridge to the Stark County Fairgrounds and Event Park Bridge, we're calling it. I believe the idea we have is a bill of sale to the county. This is a bridge that the county had replaced a few years back, it was on the Green River north of Dickinson, but the city had taken that bridge over, paid for the cost of moving that bridge without a specific intent for the bridge at the time. Over the years, we have not came up with a specific use for the bridge, the county has now requested to regain ownership of that bridge. So this one could put together, this bill of sale, potentially, and I don't want to leave out any details, but essentially it will, as a county, reverse the city for the trust we have into moving the bridge, it will transfer the liability of anything that would happen to the bridge, once this bill of sale would be approved, that responsibility will now lie with the county and we would be, have to down the bridge, so. That matter of issue reported, I'd be open to any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on this bill of sale for a bridge which is located out at the fire training station, if you haven't been out there, seen it, sitting in the corner? Any questions for Mr. Kubis or Mrs. Winko?
The fee is basically what we had into it?
Recouping what we got.
Move it.
Yeah, and they're moving it, and if anything happens to it in transport, not on us, so.
Correct. Move to sell the bridge.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Steiner to approve the sale of the bridge.
Second.
The second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
And chair votes aye. Motion carries. We're going to move into our 5:00 here. First item up is Fire Marshal Selly, he's got a public hearing for our fire code update, and this is the second reading, trying to remember when our first reading was, seems like a time ago.
It was quite some time. Mr. President, commissioners, this is just the final reading of the fire code with the adoptions to mirror the building code and the, some of the amendments to the fire code for a reminder was removal of the requirement for sprinkler systems in A2 occupancies with greater than 300 people and the addition to daycare providers to follow the international residential, residential code, appendix M for daycares in a dwelling, just giving us some standards to follow instead of having our, our standards from our department, but something more written in code. Other than that, it was just changes for dates, updating of codes and mirroring the building code.
And this is ordinance 1690?
That's what I show.
And so any questions for Fire Marshal Selly on the second reading and of the fire code updates, which are located in...
code updates, which are located in ordinance 1690? Comments? This is a public hearing, so if there are no comments or questions from Commissioners, we'll move into the public hearing. And they will ring in here if somebody does call in.
We'll dial in.
Okay, okay.
If you might, President Decker, just remind them what that number is.
Right, and if anyone watching wants to call in for this public hearing, number is 701-456-7006.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence or music on hold when connected.
Anyone from the public, please call in to 701-456-7006. Hearing no one from the public, I'm going to just mute this, just to keep the line open. Any further questions, Commissioners, on this second reading? If not, I'd look for a motion. I'm going to close the public hearing and look for a motion.
What's the ordinance number?
1690.
Move to approve, second reading, ordinance 1690.
We have a motion by Commissioner Frederick to approve 1690.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Steiner. Any further questions or comments on 1690? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Second part of the public hearing, public comments tonight at 5:00 PM. You can call in at this time if you have any public comments to 701-456-7006. Again, the number is 701-456-7006. Please call in if you have any comments not on our agenda this evening.
Okay, you got one.
Good evening, can you state your name for the record?
Peggy O'Brien.
Good evening, Peggy, the I box. Comments about something not on the agenda this evening?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead and proceed.
Good evening, this is Peggy O'Brien, and can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Peggy O'Brien?
We can hear you, Peggy.
Do you still have it muted?
No, it's off mute.
Not so much comments, I'm just calling to ask for some assistance.
Okay, proceed. I think she's watching the feed.
I'm calling to ask you guys for some assistance, okay. I'm calling to ask for assistance from you for, probably via Channel 19, to inform the public of two topics. I've had some individuals from the public visit with me about some concerns that they have, so I'm just pounding that on. They are, they are a little bit concerned that the candidate forum on May 14 is not going to be broadcast on channel, Channel 19. So, they've expressed a little dismay because some of them don't have Facebook, but if that information could just be disseminated, you know, via Channel 19 or the general public, I think that would be helpful because there is some confusion there. And then, my second point is, and Joe Ba already touched on this, but I think just to remind people about the ballot to June being a mail-in ballot only. I think there is some confusion that attached with that because this is obviously the first time that we've had to tread through these waters. So, if you could just remind them of those few things via Channel 19, because I know it does have a lot of people that watch, and I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. We will have our IT department contact the chamber and try to secure that feed or recording of that debate so that it can be broadcast on Channel 19. I think it would be helpful.
Wonderful.
I think it would be helpful.
Yes, I appreciate that very much, thank you.
Yep, and thank you for the comments on the mail-in ballots, I think we are headed into unknown waters on this election, and we'll see how that goes.
Definitely, thank you.
Thank you for calling in.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Anyone else wishes to call in? Anyone else from the public? Hearing no one else from the public has any comments on items not on our agenda or concerns not listed on our agenda, I will close the public comments section. We'll move back to Mr. Kubis. Mr. Kubis, you have a habit of, you know, you're always kind of following them when we have public comments or...
Lucky number five.
It is. Okay, you have some other items?
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioner, we have two Apex task orders for consideration this evening. The first one is for plan review services, and we have this task order with Apex for several years now, and this is just an extension of that task order, it's actually expired, the last task order has expired for plan review services. This task order does not have a set dollar amount to it, because that dollar amount is annually set by our departmental needs and by our budget, so we can't exceed the budget that we have for engineering review fees set, we have a fee for that in engineering and in public works, so that's the amount, that's already set by commission every year during our budgeting process. It's very, very similar, I think exactly the same to the prior task order we had for plan review services. With that, I would stand for any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis? Hearing no questions or comments, so I would look for a motion on this task order with Apex for engineer services.
Who'd you approve, Mr. President?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Trustum, and a second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions, discussion? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Kubis, you have another item?
Yes, President Decker, Commissioner, on the next item is again a general planning and modeling task order with Apex, very, very similar in nature, the wording is very, very similar. The only reason that they are separate is that there is a slight bit of liability difference to the consultant, whether they're performing plan review or planning and modeling, but essentially, the task order is the same, again, budget not set in the task order, but set by our departmental budget, approved initially, annualized commission. It's very, very similar, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on this task order with Apex for modeling services? Any questions? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Who'd you approve?
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
And a second by Commissioner Steiner. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Mr. Kubis, you have a task order with KLJ for the South State Avenue Right-Away.
Yes, President Decker, Commissioner, thank you. This is actually a task order amendment, we had interviewed two task orders for right away services. This is for our South State Avenue Lardery project. Due to real inconvenience with this task order amendment, when we went into this, we had, I believe, four landowners that we needed to negotiate with. KLJ has negotiated, and we've approved right away agreements with three of those landowners. The fourth one, you may know, was Mr. Dennis Holstein, a longtime architect in the community. During negotiations, he had passed away. Just recently, this, I believe it was within the last six months or so, his Wood Elvis Rowan Holstein had passed away, and so this particular piece of property has been in the probate twice, unfortunately. So, KLJ is beginning again to work with the personal representative of this estate, is Terry Holstein. So, that's really been the bulk of the work, and that's, I guess, sometimes the way the cards fall, when you work with landowners. The other amount that's included is $21,790 amendment, is for KLJ, the minister of North Dakota, Cleanmore, SRF loan, which we applied for and then approved for, we have not drawn this loan yet, and we won't start doing that until construction begins, which we still anticipate will be July or so, middle of the summer, as soon as we can get a deal, so to speak, with this home. With that, I would open it up to any questions you have.
Any questions for Mr. Kubis on this right away agreement with KLJ for their services? Questions or comments? Hearing no questions or comments from Mr. Kubis, I'd look for a motion.
Who'd you approve?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Steiner, a second by Commissioner Trustum. Any further discussion, questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Think that is it, Mr. Kubis?
That is it, thank you, Commissioner.
Good to see you again. Seems like an eternity.
You're welcome.
Okay, we'll move into Public Works. Public Works directors, Zurov, you have a midco diving agreement, because we pulled off the first item this evening for the rail terminal, so we'll just jump into the midco diving agreement.
Thank you, President Decker, Commissioner, good evening. This evening, I have the agreement with midco diving and marine, previously had done some inspection, and noted the manager of repairs needed in our tanks, so that scope of this proposal includes epoxy repairs, weather stripping, and sediment removal if needed. All the epoxy repairs are approved material, and all dissection is done following the American standards. Be glad to answer any questions on this or any other topic, and City staff recommend approval.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Zurov? We have them come in, is it on an annual basis, Mr. Zurov, or is it biannual?
It's been a couple of years on this, we just started probably two, four years ago doing kind of an inspection, I think we have it set up for every other year now, depending on, you know, what repairs they see as needed, and there's been very little sediment in any of the tanks, of course, a lot of them are fairly new, but that's what we've been doing so far.
Any other comments or questions for Mr. Zurov? Now I'd look for a motion.
Who'd you approve?
We have a motion to approve the midco diving agreement by Commissioner Trustum.
Second.
With a second from Commissioner Walla. Any further questions, comments for Mrs. Zurov? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you, Mrs. Zurov.
Thank you.
Okay, looks like the, we are down to Commissioners. Are there any items you wish to bring up?
Just a couple, maybe Mr. Gau could just update everyone here in the public on the fire chief search and the compensation study.
Yes, very good, thank you, Commissioner Frederick, President Decker, Commissioners. As far as the fire chief search, we set up a pretty good search, we put out a profile, had planned to do interviews this past week, actually, the 16th and 17th of April. We did very good in getting our profile out, I was very pleased with our candidate pool, we had 20 candidates apply initially, did a first review, it was a very tough first review, and we cut it down to 14 folks, where we conducted initial Skype interviews, cut that, 14 in half, and then now we're doing reference checks, that report is nearly complete, then we'll have a little bit of follow-up to make sure all our candidates are with us, and when we see some of the travel restrictions kind of let up here, again, they're all professional firefighters, so they're in their communities, working at this virus and having some different protocols, so we'll get through that, hopefully, still targeting the middle of May to bring in maybe five finalists at the most, and bring those in, so that's good. So, we were right on time until the coronavirus hit, and so we stopped at that point. As far as the compensation study, we received five proposals, again, did kind of a first review based on budget, and a few things we were looking for, conducted interviews with three of them, again, all very good consulting firms, all very capable, we're looking, doing a little HRs, doing a little background checking there, and then we'll move forward with that, hopefully bringing you a recommendation after the committees got back together and reviewed those references the first meeting in May.
Anything else, Commissioners? I think everything that we discussed earlier today was brought up in Mr. Gau's report, the Rough Rider Commission, First on First, trying to think, we had a lot of things going on, moving parts. We had a pretty good discussion with our educators this morning, they don't foresee anything changing in the near future, I don't think we're going to be going back to school, and they don't anticipate, I asked the question because there is a university on the eastern side of the state that is starting two weeks early, this fall, and I asked the question if they anticipate starting early, either the public school system, Trinity, or ESU, and none of them anticipate any earlier dates, they're just going to stick to what was going to be the 2020, 2021 schedule. Healthcare providers, pretty much a status quo, our long-term care facilities are operating, and they are not seeing any infections, which is great, we're not seeing too big of an increase in calls, so if there are any challenges out here, I would say we're probably dealing with more domestic-type issues at the police level and some mental health issues. I think some people are locked down, so they are very concerned with some, you know, mental health issues, because we have a lack of facilities out here. As for the public, from what I've been contacted, one of the... As for the public, from what I've been contacted, one of the, the, the big concerns was, uh, about the candidate debate and being aired, um, because we do have a population in Dickinson that they do like channel 19. As much as we think maybe people don't watch it, they do watch it. And, uh, so they were, we were, you know, they were concerned about what we were going to do and I've talked with, uh, Mr. Meyer about trying to secure those, um, live feeds so they could rebroadcast them. And he'll have to talk with the chamber and see what platform they're going to use, if it's going to, is it Facebook Live or Zoom or, you know, maybe they can even cap, I don't know if they were going to broadcast it as a YouTube, so, but it is Zoom.
You can capture immediately, yeah.
Yeah, so you'll have to talk with them, Mr. Meyer, and see how you can secure that so we can broadcast it for the, um, the general public. And one of the other items was what Mr. Gau brought up about the signs. People were just reaching out, you know, saying what, you know, with the local ordinance and state ordinance, so, um, there's a lot of challenges ahead of us and we'll just keep plugging away and, and hopefully get through this first election cycle and see where that leads us as a city. Anything else, Commissioners? Hearing nothing else, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Second.
We are adjourned.